And let me just gather my thoughts here. Okay, let's go ahead and just start with the meeting follow up. Does anybody have anything from last week's work session talked about, anything like that? Carter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Anybody? All right, RFP.
All right. Many of you, or good evening, everybody. Nice to be with you tonight. Many of you are aware of the activity and the work of the opioid committee. And you're aware that we have taken on a president and we've taken on a vice president of whom are around this table right now. And we also have that industry representative that the members of the commission and your esteemed members chose to fill out the remaining portion of that vacancy on the committee. We are now at the point where the committee would like to release an RFP that would invite ideas and proposals and so forth from the industry in order to put some feet under the services that these funds would be used for. And we believe between the county funds and the city funds that there could be as much as $2.6 million available for the effort. And so that essentially is what the context of the RFP is. We are here because the agreement with the county, the MOU that we have, requires that the RFP be given your blessing. And so that we can release the RFP and then, of course, bring forward ultimately a contract for service, hopefully, as a result of this of this process that, you know, I would expect the committee to endorse when that time comes. So at this point tonight, all we really need is your blessing with the RFP. And then we can release the RFP and seek solicitations from, or proposals, I should say, from vendors in the field. And that really is it.
Great. Any questions about the memo or what Carter presented?
Sure, it must be in the memo somewhere, but in there, on the scope of service, on the priorities, maybe Randy or Mike? On the priorities, like, for example, the continuum of care and case management and so forth. Is that limited to individuals who have been either impacted somehow, either as a through addiction or a family member buy opioids specifically? Or is it broader than that to, like, other substance addiction issues? Do you know?
Great question.
Everyone looking to the president. I thought, you know, obviously, the settlement monies were in relation to the opioid use epidemic and opioid use disorder is an emphasis of the grant. But I believe in our previous discussions with the city attorney, the language of the grant or the settlement monies was broad enough to loop in just substance use disorder in general, I believe, is my understanding. So certainly, I'll try to pull up the, you know, if I can dredge up the notes in regards to the requirements that we base the RFP off of. But I thought I remembered it being pretty broad.
Okay.
Just substance use in general, I think.
Okay, Carter had something to add real quickly.
Yeah, just real quickly, just for a point of context, if you will. We did have the city attorney help us to construct that RFP. And he did that against the guardrails that the settlement suggested we should. And I said suggested. It's more than a suggestion, of course. But furthermore, we leaned really heavily on the industry representative on our committee as well to put that language together. And so I feel really confident that what you see in the RFP is appropriate with regard to what it is that both the industry and legal counsel thinks is appropriate.
Yeah, because I remember having kind of that same question when we saw the initial paperwork coming out.
Right.
That it seemed vague in areas in terms of what exactly you could do, what the parameters were of that allocation. And did I see something in here about, I think it was something else, about third spaces? I might be confusing this with something else. I think I saw.
I think the third spaces, Mr. Mayor, but good. Counselor was referenced in the priority based budgeting.
Thank you.
Segment of, yeah. There was quite a bit of emphasis on third spaces.
Thank you. I knew I said something.
Of course, of course.
Pat, do you have something?
So, thank you, Mayor. So again, my only, I thought it was very well put together and it looked great. My only concern was just blowing the budget all at once instead of, you know, a further timeline. And I think the response of our member last time was, you know, hopefully, some of the respondents to the RFP might, you know, look at it in that manner and it might spread over to a couple of years. That was my only thought on that. Should we be looking at it as a longer term project? Because the information I'm reading, some of them settled, some bankrupt, went bankrupt, some want to do one time payment. And so we may not see a lot more money.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, you are tracking very closely what the committee's concerns were too. The committee, as near as I can tell, was really hopeful that the 2.5 or 2.6 million dollars will go as far as it can over time and, of course, with respect to how many people can be helped. Furthermore, we are hopeful that the settlement dollars will continue to come. Although we don't know by how much and over what duration that that could be. That's the real difficult part of all this is, at the end of the day, we really don't know how much we're working with other than what we have on hand. So I think you're tracking really closely.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Haskins, did you want to bring up your concern? Or you want me to throw it out in the open? All right. So in our last committee meeting, we had talked about binding this to just the first year of its kind of origination and allowing proposals that could be multi-year, I believe, was the consensus we came to. Counselor Haskins noticed that the language in the RFP, I just had it pulled up. Where was that, Randy? We do have some language in there that sounds like it kind of restricts it to one year. And so that would be the only area of the RFP that I would recommend we open up or amend.
Bottom and page two.
Page two of the RFP.
Under purpose and background, right underneath one, two, three. The submit proposals for one year of funding.
So I would just recommend that we make that a little bit more broad, that we are willing to accept proposals that could be multi-year in length.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree. I think that was the direction. So I think that might have been just an oversight. So as far as I'm concerned, this should be changed.
Cool.
Thank you.
Anything else? Jack, go ahead.
So on page, it's page nine of the packet. There's some blanks on there. Proposals should be received by, is that yet to be determined or?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, the committee did give us some direction in that regard. And pending where this goes with both the council and the commission, we did get direction with regard to dates. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Chairman, that was, we were shooting for the middle of September to have interviews with vendors. And so we will have cascading deadlines that lead us up to that point.
The discussion. Okay. Just need a thumbs up from us to move forward with that.
That would be great.
Is everybody okay with it?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the CBC remodel update. We just met, the committee met on Friday to discuss this. And so I'm going to let Carter set the stage and then we'll have Tom come up and debrief us and we can talk a little bit from the committee as well.
Thank you, thank you. As you are all aware, we've been working on the police building, i.e. the remodel of the Casper Business Center for quite some time now. And as a matter of fact, as you probably all know, phase one is now complete. There may be a few punch list items, but we have the asbestos removed aside from what's in the windows themselves. And the walls have been deconstructed. The place looks a lot different than what you probably remember coming in to see staff back when we were over there for that couple of year period that we were there. We are now at the point where we need to start some substantive construction, if you will, reconstruction of the building. And we'd like to get your blessing in terms of our overall view of how to move forward from here. Not the least of which would be to allow staff to move forward in a bid process that would request proposals for phase two, which we believe we can do with cash currently on hand. And then subsequent to that, a third phase that we believe we will need some additional revenue in order to make happen, the discussion of which was held by the committee that the mayor referenced, wherein we do have a recommendation for your consideration this evening. And that recommendation includes utilizing certificates of participation in order to fund that third phase. So Tom is certainly here tonight to walk you through the elements of those phases, to help you understand what those include. And we also have Jill here tonight in order to walk you through the mechanism by which that third phase would be incorporated, as well as any questions you might have with regard to the cash makeup of that second phase that we'd like to get started with post haste. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I can defer to staff, I would.
Hi, Tom.
Evening, Mayor, councilors. Just ecstatic, really excited to be here. I want to thank the members of the council, the farview that are on that committee that showed up and gave us such great direction. It was such a great meeting. I know I went home that evening and told my wife that my sails were full of wind. You know, it gave me some great hope that we were moving in that direction. Since I started here about two years ago, I've been working quite a bit on this project, trying to see how we keep it moving forward. And I appreciate all of council's support to date. What we based on for the meeting on Friday was based upon some cost estimates that are fairly old. They're about nine months old from the last time when we put together kind of these three phases for the project. And so I want to report to you some updates on those, what those phases are, the cost estimates that we have for those phases, where we go from here. And then, again, that financial plan. And at that point, I'm going to rely on my friend Jill to help me out as needed to help explain some more on those certificates of participation that will be important for funding the third phase. So it was back in June of 2024 when we engaged Sampson Construction to do, to be our C Mar on this project. Again, they've been a great ally. We continue to work with Police Facilities Design Group on the design of the building and, again, splitting this thing into phases. The first phase was demolition and asbestos abatement. And that was basically, hey, how do we start with a clean slate? How do I get rid of all the asbestos? In order to get to the asbestos, we had to do the demolition. So that's why we combined the demolition and asbestos abatement. And again, that project is completed and it came in about $80,000 under budget. So we had budgeted that just over $5 million bucks and it came in at 4.925 million in round numbers. So good news on phase one, you know, the asbestos is abated in the building. Not 100%. There's still an asbestos adhesive that's behind the windows that we still have to deal with when we remove and replace those windows. And there was two areas where we had operating electrical equipment from Mountain West over there, where all of their equipment was sitting on top of this flooring and that asbestos was encapsulated by this flooring. We didn't go in and move all that equipment out that is functional and operating right now to abate that asbestos, but it is encapsulated. And we've noted on those drawings where the asbestos is encapsulated. So the next phase of the project, when we started this thing, was the core core equipment. So you have HVAC equipment, you have plumbing equipment, you have electrical, you have fire suppression, and let's not forget the windows. You know, because again, the windows are failing right now as we speak. We all know from being in that building for a little over a year, there was sides of the building, south side, that were incredibly hot during the summer, oftentimes fairly warm even in the winter. And the north side of the building, very, very cool in the winter. And so that, you know, very poor old glass, 40 year old glass. And so we need to replace those windows. So it was that core equipment. When we did the cost estimate, we envisioned going ahead and remodeling all the bathrooms from floor one all the way up to floor eight. In the process, we decided we're going to pump the brakes on that a little bit because there may be some floors where we don't need those bathrooms. Just like building a house or remodeling a house, the most expensive space in your house and in a building are bathrooms and kitchens. And so we did not want to get ahead of ourselves and do those and do those. So as of last Thursday, we received subcontractor bids for phase two. Unfortunately, where I'm at today, I don't have the magical number to give you because that was all the sub bids. And I spoke to Sampson Construction and they're still reviewing those. You know, for example, they have an electrical bid on the project where one person specifically excluded like some lightning suppression equipment and excluded some others. So it's a challenging and timely task to review all those bids and make sure, did they include everything that they needed to have in the package? And then what are we going to put in the package? I'm hoping by the end of this week, maybe even pre-meeting at the next council, that I can give you an update of what those numbers are. But for phase two, which is the core infrastructure, we had a price, an estimate of $18 million and some change, 18,176. I can tell you where we sit today. I really believe we're going to be well under that number. We're going to be under that number because we don't have some of that bathroom remodel work in there. We're going to be under that number because those bids that we received were very aggressive. The other really great news is a lot of local contractors were the little bidders on this. So again, it looks like a lot of this money that we're going to be spitting on this building is going to be with local building contractors here for the mechanical, the plumbing and the electrical, likely the electrical. The other piece that's interesting, and it's a nod to the C Mar process, is because it's a police station, there's specific code requirements for like the HVAC unit. It has to have a vibration table so that seismic can affect it. Even though we don't think of Casper and Casper, from a code standpoint, isn't in a high seismic area. Because this is a police station, because there's dispatch in there, that HVAC equipment has to meet a certain seismic requirement. Because it's a C Mar process, we've got one contractor that believes they can save us $400,000 on that HVAC equipment by meeting the code, but in a little different way. So sometime this week, next week, we'll be meeting with our code enforcement folks here, city engineering, the mechanical engineer for the project, Sampson Construction and their mechanical contractor to see if we can't save $400,000 on mechanical, which is great news. So that's phase two, just core mechanical equipment, new boilers, new chillers, new fire risers, new, the core infrastructure, electrical going ups to the sub panels that are on each floor. And then phase three is estimated to be just under $17 million. Now, phase three assumed that there was going to be five floors remodeled. As we sit right now, we're trying to get that down to four floors or six floors, excuse me. We're trying to get that down to four floors. We're trying to figure out, because we've had some different concepts, working with the chief, on how can we get the police potentially onto floors one, two, and three? The good part about that is there's a separate elevator that serves floor one, two, and three, the one that used to be part of the bank that was there, American Bank. And so that becomes an elevator that we can use for, you know, secure elevator for possibly prison transport or other things versus the public facing elevators. And so we've been working on a plan to try and get the police space compressed to floors one, two, and three. And then on the floor eight, we'd have the dispatch. We may, if we can't reach that, we may end up having, you know, the police on another floor or half a floor. But again, we're frantically working away with the architect and internally, trying to figure out how to get that number down. Bottom line, my commitment to Carter for over a year has been this building will be under 40 million bucks. You know, we will get an operational, functional police station for under $40 million. And so when we add up phases one, two, and three, they come up right to $40 million. I know there's already cost savings in phase two and I'm confident in working through some value engineering components in phase three, you know, that we can continue to get that price down. I want to be very honest. I don't think that price is going to be anywhere near $30 million. I don't think there's $10 million in this project to save. But do I think there's maybe $1 million to save or maybe a little more? Absolutely. We're going to try and wring all the extra costs out of there we can, still making it a very functional police station. From a schedule standpoint, again, and I think that was on the second to last or page, yeah, page five of six of your memo, I showed the schedule in there. And basically, we'd like to award phase two here within the next few weeks, three or four weeks. And we're not going to see work start away, right away, because there's a lot of long lead times items. This HVAC and electrical equipment has quite a bit of lead time. So it's probably around the turn of the year when you'd see the work start on phase two. And then you'll also see that we have phase three rushing right in there over the top of phase two. And then there's a purpose for that. If we waited till phase two was completely done before we did phase three, we would have, I think it was 24 unit heaters on different floors to provide heat while we're waiting to do phase three. If we can get phase three under construction while phase two is being done, we don't have to buy those unit heaters. We'd buy them, install them, operate them for six months and then we'd have to salvage them. So we're trying to put phase two and phase three and smear those phases over the top. And that's going to require a lot of work with the architect to get those spaces designed and planned out. So again, working aggressively on the schedule. Ultimately, you know, our very conservative estimate is by June of 2027, you know, this building would be completely, totally functional and operational. We still have several floors that are, you know, just raw, that are vacant floors. They will have the necessary fire suppression. They will have the necessary heat. They will have everything that's necessary. So if they sit there for some time. And again, if we try and combine these floors together, you know, skipping a floor here and a floor here makes it harder if we have to go in and reconstruct those floors at a later date. Another one we're going to look at is, does it make any sense to preload some of the materials on those floors? So if and when we need to construct them, we have that. There would have to be some really compelling arguments to do that for me to try and spend money on sheetrock or other things to preload on those floors. From, again, construction and planning standpoint, that's where we're at. So the interesting thing, when we grind this down, we look at how much money do we have, you know, sitting in the bank right now that's dedicated to this project? And if you look on the last page, it's at $14.7 million. That's how much money we'd have in the bank. Well, you can recall phase two, the construction estimate is 16.5 million in round numbers. And I think we're going to come into that. And then the contingency, this includes the C Mar contingency and the contingency for the city is about 1.7 million. And our plan is to fund that 16.5 million dollars with cash on hand. The 14.7 million that's already dedicated to this and other cash resources that we have on hand to fund that 16.5 million and then fund that 1.7 million dollars in contingency with the line of credit. And so why a line of credit? A line of credit is its contingency. We hope we don't need that contingency. That contingency is in there if we have unforeseen conditions. We've got a pretty blank slate in the building. Another fun construction aside, Sampson is going into that building, I believe, this week. I believe on Thursday, and they're going to do a 3D scan of the entire building. Now that it's completely open and empty, they do a 3D scan. And so within very small centimeter or something of accuracy, they'll know where every piece is in that building. And it makes it really, really neat. Ultimately, when we have record drawings, you can look at those drawings. You can look at the building when it was bare, when the framing was in, you know, when the rough plumbing was in and then when it's complete on those record drawings using the scanning equipment that they're using. So it's modern technology coming together. So that would be the total of phase one, which would be about 18.2 million dollars for phase one. Again, 1.7 from a line of credit, the other 16.5 million from cash on hand. So then we go, all right, what are we at for phase two? So phase two is 15.5 million and about 1.4 million dollars in contingency. And so just the contingency would be funded out of a line of credit. And the plan for the other 15.5 million dollars is to look at a certificate of participation. Please, if you want to know more details, Jill can help out. But this isn't a bond issuance. It's essentially kind of a lease on the building. So they behave like government, government bonds. So that means, you know, it entices the market to invest it because it's not taxable. So the interest rate right now is around 4.2% on those. And you can get them in any duration. We were looking at like a 20 year duration for these certificates of participation. And basically, it's tied to the building. It's a lease on the building. And it comes in at that, again, in government bond rate of 4.2%. And so there's a lot of discussion in our work group, but Jill is doing an amazing job with our investment. There's no reason for us to take a large chunk out of our investment money when, right now, we're getting a greater rate of return than 4.2% on our investment money. So it just, it seemed to be like the perfect solution of how we fund the budget shortfall on this project was with those certificates of participation and round numbers in the amount of $15 million. And if memory serves me correct, I think that was about 1.4 million dollars per year would be the payment in 20 years on those certificates of participation. So as we sit here today as staff, our recommendation is full speed ahead. Continue with the design of the facility, continue and bring forward guaranteed maximum price for phase two for Sampson Construction Company to do that core infrastructure and to do the windows and continue with the design of phase three. And, you know, with the ultimate goal of securing the guaranteed maximum price for phase three, which will be to create a functional police station and to fund that with line of credit for contingency and then certificates of participation in the amount of $15 million for the overall capital construction. A whole lot to think about, a lot of information in a fairly short period of time. I'm more than willing to try and address questions. And if there are financial questions, I'm absolutely going to defer to my friend Jill to help me out and bail me out.
Any questions for the committee too? Would be more than happy to chat. Pat, your answer is up for square.
So first off, thanks, Tom. So to be clear, we're talking about four floors out of the building that what we won't deal with, you know, as far as sheetrock, any of that at this point in time. But as you said, it'll be roughed out with fire suppression and heating and cooling.
That is correct. Not a lot of cooling, more so on the critical for heat to keep things from freezing. And so, and I want to clarify one thing on sheetrock. And that is when we put in the windows as part of phase two and we do insulate the outside of the building, we'll be putting sheetrock on there. We'll just be skim coating the joints, not doing a finished surface or texturing on there. But we'll insulate the exterior walls of the building and put sheetrock on those exterior walls as part of the window work. So there is some sheetrock that goes in there, but none of the interior, you know, wall construction, no, you know, sprinkler heads, not extensive throughout. It's just going to be core infrastructure. So those, and right now, you know, our target is those, we want to construct the four floors. It could be five, you know, depending on our ability to fit all of the police services we need on floors one, two, and three.
So follow up to that also. So it also doesn't include any work to the parking garage?
That is correct. Does not include any work in the parking garage. There's some structural work that needs to be done in the parking garage that staff believes it's a much easier project to handle internally. We have a local structural engineer that's shown us what we do, need to do. It's kind of specialty work to go in there and those pre-manufactured slabs, jack them up and put a new beam in there and then weld it into place. And we believe with our local structural engineer. And we believe with our local structural engineer, we can bid that project separately. And again, it's not as urgent right now. Structural engineers pushing and wants to make sure we don't forget it, and we certainly haven't forgot it, but it's not included. And there's no reason to roll that under the C Mar because then we've paid all the C Mar markup on this when it's work that we can, we can manage internally from a standpoint of contract administration.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few different questions. I'm glad to hear that the committee is still meeting. I guess I was under the assumption that their work had wrapped up, so I'm glad to hear of us are kind of tackling this off the side. Can I get a reminder who's on that committee? Three, four? Yeah, cool. I was also, I did a walk around at the Natrona County Health Department today. And Sampson is the CMR, CMAR over there as well. And Brandon Daigle at MOA Architecture and Anna at the Health Department, everyone had very, very complimentary, nice things to say about how that whole process was planned out for the Health Department. They were going to come in under budget, so I'm feeling really confident having Sampson as our CMAR on this project as well. My question, Tom, is I noticed in phase two, there's quite a bit of funding for fire suppression, plumbing, heating, electrical. And then in phase three, also quite a bit of funding for fire suppression, plumbing, heating, electrical. What's the distinction? You know, what work is not being done in phase two that will need to be done in phase three?
Specifically, Counselor, specifically to fire suppression plumbing?
Yeah, that core infrastructure. So the way I was reading it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, phase two seemed to be core infrastructure through the whole building. And then phase three was more so kind of the finishing work and the work needed to get those four floors for PD ready to move in. And so I was just wondering, because it's, even in phase three, it's pretty significant, like, you know, it's like six million dollars between, specifically electrical, electrical and heating is like six million between the two of them. So what work, what did that core infrastructure work is not getting done in phase two that needs done in phase three? Yeah, I guess why are these spread across the years?
The easiest way to explain that, phase two is predominantly the vertical stuff, the stuff that's going vertical. So you can imagine if we need electrical to every floor, we put big electrical conduit that goes nine floors up. At every floor, we put an electrical sub panel. And then from there, we need to run some lights, we need to have some outlets, but they're kind of temporary construction lights and outlets. So same with plumbing, plumbing, big pipe, top to bottom. We're not putting in toilets, we're not putting in sinks, we're not putting in, you know, all the small piping, it's mostly that vertical. The same thing with fire suppression. We're putting in fire suppression risers with fire stations and a fire line coming off at every floor. So that would be phase two. Phase three is, we're putting in electrical outlets in walls, we're putting lights in every room, we're putting fire suppression sprinklers in every room. We're running all the pipes that go over there. So phase two is mostly vertical, phase three is mostly horizontal. So there's, behind these numbers, stacks and stacks of paper from Sampson of doing takeoffs to figure out what all these numbers are. The good news now is we're going to have very definitive scope and numbers on phase two. And when we work with the architect to further refine that scope for phase three, we'll have those very definitive numbers for phase three as well.
Appreciate that clarification. Thank you. Follow up, thank you. Let me see if I can be concise in asking this question. A few years ago, when the building was purchased, I believe the original intent was to have it host PD, municipal court, dispatch, IT. I think we briefly talked about fire administration, but I think that got pulled off fairly early. But I, my understanding was there was supposed to be like four, at least four city departments kind of over there. It sounds like this phased construction plan is simply to get PD and dispatch in there. There's no mention of like municipal court. I think IT was kind of mentioned in the end, but I don't believe they're kind of being, what was it like? If we have extra money, we'll slide IT in or something like that. But I didn't get the impression that this was, you know, they were for sure getting in there. And so back in twenty twenty-two, we had gotten an estimate for renovation at twenty-nine point nine one million. In September of twenty-three, that got boosted to thirty-eight point six six. And I'm glad to see that now, my math was all three of these phases, including asbestos abatement and demolition that we've just done. The four point nine million plus the two phases we're talking about tonight would equal thirty-eight, thirty-eight million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, so that's less than the thirty-eight six six that we got in September twenty-three. So I'm actually impressed that that estimate's gone down in the past two years. But could you help me understand how we got from the original budget of twenty-five up to forty? And we pared back, in my opinion, we pulled back the scope of that project. Any context, any light you can shed for me as somebody who doesn't work in construction? I know, you know, inflation and stuff, but it seems like the jump from twenty-five to forty and the pairing back of the scope is above and beyond kind of what we've experienced in inflation the past year.
Mayor, Counselor, certainly the cost estimates that we were basing this off of at the time, because it's a job to do a cost estimate. And so until we refine really what we want to do for the scope of these floors, I can't just tell Sampson, he'd grind me out another cost estimate because it literally takes weeks and a lot of effort. And so in preparing this memo and in preparing this strategy, we did not provide an updated cost estimate for the new scope of work. And so I'll tell you right now, our intent is not to include, address those specific items. First is the courtrooms. As part of this project, when I first got involved, I went to tour the police station, I went to tour the courtrooms. Right now, there's three courtrooms that we have over there across the street, and two of them are basically storing stuff, and we're only using one courtroom. Knowing that courtrooms are fairly expensive, because you end up building judge's restroom, she end up, they have a little more nicer finishes, just like the boardroom that we looked at today where they talked about a nicer finish. They have nicer finishes, and I said, hey, there's no reason, this isn't an urgency right now to build a courtroom. IT was, IT is in a decent place now, and they were only taking up about half a floor. And the police have really done a lot of heavy lifting, have been very serious about looking at how to reduce their space. We don't have that enveloped into this cost estimate right now. That forty million dollars is just kind of my promise of the upend budget, but I hope to bring that in appreciably below that. And in the process, I still want to talk about it because the idea that we could include IT in this building, if we can get it under our budget, it makes some sense because then we can sell a building that we're now owning and operating, you know? If, if dispatch, absolutely is going to be there, that's where we need to be, and then we can get rid of the lease that we have for dispatch. And there's some appreciable savings there. And so it's, it's still kind of a dynamic model. Big jump in cost, I did a presentation to Council some time ago, but you had the COVID inflation where we had very, very significant inflation. You have the fact that one of the initial budgets didn't include the replacement of the windows, which I believe to be essential. You have the cost, the pure Casper effect, the fact that Sampson helped me understand that to build the exact same building in Casper versus the front range in Colorado is like twenty to twenty-five percent higher. And that's part of, part of our labor costs here, the fact that we don't have a really healthy force of skilled and semi-skilled labor. We've all been talking about this in this community for years, decades. And so again, it's just a higher cost. And so again, I can, I can pull up, if you wanted, in an informational memo, I can pull up all the data on why the cost did increase. But the cost increases, to me, were pretty easy to encapsulate. We're riding the elevator down, pardon the, pardon comparison, but I'm trying to reduce the scope of this project as much as we can to get it well under forty million. The plan as presented today allows us to keep proceeding ahead, which has been my goal for the last two years here. Is probably not going to move ahead incredibly quickly, but if we can just keep moving ahead, we know we need to build the police station. Because every year we delay it, round numbers, if it's forty million, you know, right now, I think that's one point two to one point five million dollars of inflation a year. So to me, delaying was not an option. The idea that we have this certificate of participation out there at a interest rate that is, you know, a little bit above inflation, but not too much above inflation, I think we have a really good path forward. I hope, I hope that addressed your question.
Yes, it's definitely helpful, and I got more, but I'd, I'll let other folks jump in.
Somebody else want me? Good.
You guys are just going to let me cook tonight, huh?
Thanks, Tom. I was curious, so the, well, floors one, two, three, and then I guess I'm still unclear what eight would be.
Dispatch.
All right, eight's dispatch, one, two, three is for the police department. Do you mind summarizing, or maybe, I don't know, if the chief is better equipped to answer, but the scope of what we intend on doing with the three floors for PD? I remember Chief McFeeters, when he was taking point on this, I thought I recall there being intent to build like a, you know, weight room and gym area, I think a shooting range came up at one point, maybe that already got axed. My recollection is just a little unclear, do you mind re-summarizing for me what we intend on doing with the three floors for the police department?
The final design and space planning for the police is still not secured. We're still working with the architect on that. I can tell you things that it will absolutely, you know, the basic force, the basic needs that they have for the officers that are there, the basic needs they have for interrogation, for family questioning rooms, for those type of stuff. On top of that, absolutely need to build a locker room with showers. You know, the idea that these guys and ladies can go into really bad places during the day and don't want to go home until they've been allowed to shower. There is plans to build as well, gymnasium in there, they've acquired equipment from another gym that was going out of business. So they've got the equipment, that's a pretty low-cost space. One of the big areas that we've looked at, that planning around is evidence storage. Because evidence storage takes up a lot of space and it's expensive. And one of the concepts has been, can we do a regional evidence storage? You know, it's a concept that Chief Chaney has brought forward, and that is, there's real value to that, just like dispatch. If the county, Evansville and Mills, and even Highway Patrol, all use the same evidence storage, they all end up in similar courtrooms that are in a reasonable proximity to there. Can we do evidence storage in a different location? So we've looked at, one way to reduce the amount of space and reduce the cost for this building is to plant evidence storage at a different location or possibly a different floor at a later date where we try and corral all of our partners that would be involved in evidence storage and have them all involved in that. That's just a concept at this point, but it's an area where we could significantly reduce finished space. It was not really inexpensive space and put it in another location and have some partners to share in that cost.
Good, thank you.
Somebody else for it? Pat, do you have something?
Go for it.
We'll let you talk this time.
So as far as, I mean, a lot of those things, I'm, I'm sure you've already looked at the weight load, you know, proportionally, and what, what the building and the structure will accept for four.
Mayor, Counselor, absolutely. Spent a lot of time with Bob Lower, making darn sure, because again, there's different code requirements for it being a police station than when it was a bank in an office building. And so I can't remember why that question came front forward about six or eight months ago. But it caused me to call Bob Lower, who I've known for years, and Bob wrote me a letter that basically defined it, you know? And it's a, it's a tough old building, you know, it's a twin T building, which was really in vogue at that time. You know, some pre-manufactured twin T panels that are put in place. It's a small thing, but one item that we've just observed working with Sampson, they're like, we need to go reseal all these twin T panels. It's something that wasn't included in this initial cost. It's not a huge cost because we're going to have scaffolding up to replace the windows, but, and reseal the building. So again, there's just, the devil's in the details, but twin T buildings are just really durable old buildings. And if you look in the mid seventies through the early eighties, there was a lot of them built in this area because of ease of construction, the fact those panels could be built on an offsite location, mass produced, and then you put them together like a Lincoln log set when you bring them here.
Cool. Thanks, Mayor. Tom, this was, I think, before we ever brought you onto the city, but maybe you've just learned it through osmosis since you've been here. I believe back in twenty twenty-two, when the, I think the feasibility study was maybe twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And that's where those original estimates for renovation or new builds came from. But the figure I'm aware with of back in May twenty twenty-two that the chief would cite is, if we wanted to build new, it would be fifty million dollars. And one of the things that really appealed to me about the Casper Business Center was the potential to renovate a building with good bones and realize significant cost savings as a result. And so my question is, the fifty million dollar figure that Chief McFeeters cited several years ago, do you know, was that just for police? Or was that to build a comparable asset to the business center that would also house municipal court, IT, dispatch? Or was it strictly a building for police department utilization?
Mayor, Counselor, the last time I looked at this, which is January of this year, I put together, and this is including like the five floors that we originally had in there, the cost for a comparable building was over seventy million dollars. So, and that was the comparable sized building. And again, then you have the joy of, and that cost included land, because then you got to find the land. Then you got to figure out, all right, then you got to build it. And again, you got to design it. So while it's being designed, you have inflationary costs that are pushing on this. One of the things we talked about in our work meeting on Friday is the benefit of this location. It's probably more building than we need as far as square footage, we know that. But what a great location to have a police station that's near this centralized campus, that's at the heart of downtown, that really has a presence. So if you went to build a new police station, you know, there's a few spots I can think of, but they're pretty challenging to be in the core of Casper like this building is.
Thank you. One last one for Tom. Appreciate it, Tom. So in, in your opinion, as somebody who has far more experience working in this industry than I could ever hope to attain in my lifetime, that didn't sound good. The costs, you know, we, it sounds like we kind of have a hard forty million dollar, at least for this, these three phases to get PD and potentially IT in there. We're going to cap it at the forty million. In your opinion, is that still dramatically or just reduced in general from what it would cost to build the same facility to house the same people new? I mean, what sort of disparity were you looking at between there and your opinion?
Mayor, Counselor, I think you approached two to one. I think the cost to build a new facility is almost twice as much to build this facility. So, again, I don't think it's close at all from a purely financial standpoint.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to continue on that thread for just a second, in that estimate that you said you'd put together, and I've seen similar numbers, Tom, did that include a three-level parking garage as part of that figure?
Mayor, Mr. City Manager, no, it did not. So it did not include a parking garage, which is another, thank you very much. That is an added benefit of this facility as well, is the three-level parking garage.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
For Jill?
Yep.
For Jill?
Yeah, Jill.
I'm done with Tom. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Hello, Jill. I did some Googling over the weekend, but still looking for some further clarification. The, what are those called? They're certificates of fifty million.
Certificates of participation.
Do you mind, I think I kind of understand, but do you mind explaining how that works in practice? What that, you know, do you mind just educating me like a fifth grader on what exactly that is?
Mayor, Counselors, I would be happy to. So they're basically a lease. So how it works is we would, they run like a bond, sort of, except the collateral for them is city buildings. So the city buildings would go to the financing company, we would lease them back through our lease payments, through the certificates of participation. They are generally just like the bonds where you would do two payments a year. They have an interest rate related to them, and we would need to get a credit rating, so through a rating agency.
Do we know what, like, financing entity, is that a bank or?
Mayor, Counselor, we would actually sell them through a negotiated sale. It could be a bank, it could be a financier, it could be, they are tax exempt that are sold. So they could be sold on the market if we wanted to do a competitive sale.
Thank you. And then I think I just have one more. So also part of the appeal of renovating the business center was to get out of our leases at the Hall of Justice, at the Nerd Gas building, to consolidate, stop renting and start building equity in a city owned asset. In your opinion, how does the certificate of participation, whatever that, that annual payment would look like, 1.2, 1.4, how does that stack up against what we're currently leasing in the way of amenities from Hall of Justice, Nerd Gas and others? Are you able to do it kind of apples to apples of those two? And I understand we're limited, you know? I was trying to think of how else we come up with $15 million and I, you know, this is probably the best solution, but I'm still just curious, what does that look like? Does our ROI get pushed out 20 years until we get those certificates paid off? Any light you can shed? Thank you.
So Mayor Counselor, so the nerd lease building, or the nerd building lease, there we go, we pay about $98,000 a year on that lease. So when we're looking at coming up with $1.2 million for our lease payment in a year, that would just be a portion of it. As far as the Hall of Justice, although we would be moving out a part of it, we would still need to have part of it with our court would remain there for the time being. So we would need to look at that as well. So as far as an ROI, I have not really looked at that from that perspective, but we would need to come up, it would be paid for with sales tax. So it would be something which come up for a sales tax allocation in the general fund for the balance.
Do we have any idea what that would look like in practice? What, you know, what are we sacrificing to absorb that?
Great question. I don't know the answer to that. We would need to look at what our programs look like and maybe we might be able to come up with that revenue. But this has been a concern of the city manager of, you know, how do we fund that? And it would need to be a priority funding, and so something would give in order to do that.
Carter, I can appreciate, Counselor, why you're asking these kinds of questions, because in our discussions with the committee, that was certainly the, really the only red flag that I would offer in this approach. And that is, we don't have a utility that we can use to assess a payback plan. However, I would certainly suggest that when it comes time to consider that level of participation or your third phase, your new city manager, if they are worth their weight at all, will give you a plan that would tell you exactly how that money will be provided as it relates to making those payments every year. Because 1.4 million, 1.2 million, crud, $750,000 is not an easy lift for the, for the general fund. And I want to be super clear about that. It isn't. And so I am confident, however, that a plan can be devised and put together so that you don't have to worry about, you know, giving away the farm in order for something like that to occur. I really do. And so accordingly, I don't think that hesitation about looking at some sort of financing for that third phase, right now we're talking about COPs, which seems like a really good tool, should be the reason that you don't move forward with phase two. The police department's needs are not going to go away. In fact, they're probably going to get exacerbated over time, given the condition of their current space. And furthermore, the, the cost to do phase two as well as phase three is not going to get any lighter or any more inexpensive. And so I think we have to continue to move forward. We have to recognize that phase three is likely going to happen with some sort of financing mechanism. And we are not prepared right now to lay out that funding plan for phase three as it relates to some level of financing.
Thank you.
Any follow ups here?
Sorry, I lied. Thanks, Jill. Thanks, Carter. Tom, I think kind of alluded to it earlier, we have 30 million plus in our perpetual care fund. And so just looking for confirmation, I'm sure you've analyzed this, but should we pull, you know, do whatever we need to do to unravel the resolution, kind of establishing that corpus? If we were to go that route, take 15 mil out and just pay all this upfront, is it your position that should we leave it there, we would generate more in the way of interest revenues than we would gain by just, you know, paying for it all upfront and avoiding this certificate of participation interest payment? And I ask that in the context of these constant inflationary pressures that we seem to be under, you know, the importance of costs aren't going to go down. And so it makes me just wonder, should we just, you know, pull it out and yeah, we're going to lose the interest revenues, but over the course of the 20 years it takes us to pay these back or the next several years, I guess, to complete phase three, what does that look like? I'm sure that was part of your analysis.
Mayor Counselor, that was part of the analysis, and Tom did allude to it where he talked about the cost of borrowing is less than what we make on our investments. So it doesn't make sense to pull out our bonds or our short term investments that are making 4.66%. And then we have bonds that we would pay out in interest of 4.2, 4.3. So we actually make more money on our investments than we would pull that money out and invest it into building. In addition to that, we have some challenges. If we were to pull that money out of perpetual care, which that interest money funds our recreation subsidies, we would need to come up with money from somewhere else to make that up. So it would either be direct distribution or it be the general fund or somewhere else we would need to pull money from in order to fund the subsidies that we have for our recreation assets.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay.
Can I add to that as well?
Same matter.
That's a thread that I'd like to chime in on as well. Be aware too, that when you do consider, you know, financing versus paying in cash, you do have that tipping point that you've got to watch. As I understand certificates of participation, if indeed that tipping point becomes inverse to where the cost to borrow is more expensive than, you know, the money that you're keeping in abeyance and using for investment purposes, you have the opportunity to retire those and, 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 you know?
Shift the money.
Shift, that's right, shift the money and reevaluate the way in which you've taken care of that debt service. And so I don't think you're limited to the 20 years. I don't think you're limited to the fact that you can't retire those early. You have that opportunity to watch that tipping point, to make sure it's always in your favor as, as a city council and of course, as an organization. So that is always working in your benefit to keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
I didn't know.
I know.
I didn't know if this workup sheet that you presented to the working group would be of help to Kyle.
Mayor Counselor, I would be happy to provide that for you.
I'll give it back.
Thanks, Jill.
Don't give him more stuff to ask questions.
I know, right?
Don't encourage him.
Yeah, messed up now, okay. We have one more at this current moment. Thank you. So I totally understand the 4.66 that we're getting in interest revenue through our 30 million plus corpus with the perpetual care fund is higher than the 4.2% interest we'd be paying on the certificate of participation. And so just on its face, I totally see the merit of going that route. I guess where my head was at was if we're up against this constant 6% annual inflation of construction costs, to me, part of the analysis also needs to be if we're pushing out phase three. I guess that would be maybe a question for Tom. Whether we go certificate of participation or pulling from somewhere else and just paying for it all upfront, is the timeline of the project the same? Because my worry would be if the certificate of participation route prolongs the timeline, then we're also up against this 6% compounding interest of annual construction cost inflation. And I think that needs to factor in if the timeline's affected. If not, then maybe it's a.
Tom, can you speak to any of that?
Can I take one stab at it if you don't mind?
I'm sorry, Jill.
If you don't mind. So if, if the council wanted to go the direction of certificates of participation, we would schedule the timing of those to be exactly when Tom is ready to do that part of the project. So we would have some challenges if we were to do it early. If we were to get the money early and invested and we're making lots of money on our investments, we would be subject to IRS arbitrage repayment. So we don't want to do that. So we would actually time it very well so that when the, when the project is ready, that money will be available. So.
Mayor Counselors, I would not stand up here today at all and say we're anywhere near 6% inflation in construction materials. No, I haven't heard it recently on CNBC, but 2.3, 2.4, 3%, you know, that's the kind of inflation numbers that I'm hearing when I serially listen to CNBC when I'm driving around during the day. I think on construction materials, it's a little bit higher, but we're not in that 6% market. You know, that was just post-COVID. You know, during COVID, they were silly, you know, 15, 20%. Just post-COVID was like 6%. But again, those things have flattened out. The other challenge, but I can tell you personally investing my money, it's, I've won at it, is guaranteeing what the stock market is going to do. I mean, our rate of return, that's an unknown. Again, we're, we try to be very conservative and invest in these, but it wasn't long ago that bonds were not at 4.2%. So I mean, it's, it's a very dynamic thing in trying to guarantee. I can tell you, continuing to invest our money for my retirement, which I watch very closely, it's paid off over the long run. Have I had some tough years? You bet. But when I look at it from the point of beginning, 1991, to where I'm at today, I'm pretty tickled. And again, I think it's the same thing with the corpus of that perpetual cares fund. You know, the idea that you had got that because you're afraid, oh, maybe we'd be making less or more. I think, again, there's a good way, even in securities that we're allowed to and bonds that we're allowed to invest, that, you know, the stock market's been pretty reliable.
I added that also by utilizing the existing business, you know, center. We don't have to buy a lot of, hardly any structural steel, which is at a high, high mark, you know? And the other is concrete. That building's already set. So those are two building cost materials that are, have been rising steadily. Windows will be a different story, but I see that also as, as a plus, but.
Tom, do you want to follow up? You're done? Anybody else have anything for Tom or Jill? Thank you so much.
So before you sit down, hopefully Mike, the accountant.
Did you want to share anything, Mike, from that meeting?
Oh, sure, I can share.
Committee's standpoint?
Part of the discussion was with the COP being at a lower rate than it's just like if you have your 401K and you can borrow from yourself at a rate of 3% rather than use a credit card for 28%. It's smarter to borrow from yourself. When you're, if your investments are getting 15, 20%, you can borrow money for 3%. It's smarter to go that way. So it's just, just basic financial principles. That is the most financially, fiscally responsible thing to do, in my opinion, just based on years of finance.
And I, and I would say that the committee was in support of the recommendation.
Yep.
To be able to do that. I note today really the focus is on phase two. Thank you, Jill. On phase two and getting that moving forward. We're not quite yet ready to move into that phase three, obviously. So.
I took it as opposite, Mayor. Well, not opposite, but also leading, leaning into the principle on the COP.
Yes.
Not leaving it on the table.
No, and so I think those are the two, yeah. So phase two, we want the thumbs up for sure tonight. And then we're really, we came to a, you know, as a consensus as a committee that we're, COP is something that we feel like is fiscally responsible and wanting to lean into that as we move forward.
So just to, a little, little more color on that. Also, I advocated for getting more done and going for 16 or 17 million in the, in the process. I got a lot of pushback, especially from Carter, was how are you going to pay for that? So his blood pressure went up significantly, I can tell. And so it, it made me a little more cautious because I think Mike quickly calculated on 16 or 16 and a half million, it would raise, raise our payment of about another 75,000. And Carter was like, okay, let's have a reality check here. Where's the money coming from?
Yes.
Remitment, so. But you said I backed off.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks for that clarification. So anyway, so I guess just moving forward, are we okay number one with phase two? Since we do have money in the bank for that, we're ready to rock and roll with it. The other thing, and I'm not sure how, how we maybe just get the, the temperature of where we're at with the COPs. I know the committee is very much in favor of those. How's council feel? Tentatively looking at that as a, as the next step as well.
I mean, it seems like the only option, if that 50% residential property tax cut passes, though, we're going to be looking at some very hard decisions for the general fund.
Absolutely.
Pat, you were going to say something.
No, and I, I would advocate for more than a tentative at this point. I mean, it's not like Jill's going to run out and, you know, put it all together immediately, but I do think, I, you know, I do think she's, you know, looking at the options, so.
Carter, how would you see us? Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I feel like we can just say, let's go with it unless something materially changes between now and when we move forward with it, which I know if that happens, a different plan will be presented to us. So I'm comfortable just saying that's the plan unless we hear otherwise.
Yeah, that's, and I could have used maybe a better term than tentatively, but that was much more eloquently.
It's because it was Amber.
It was Amber. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, would Jill like to readdress that?
Go ahead, Jill.
Counselors, so it will take some time to put this all together. We'll need to get the credit rating from the agencies. We'll need to get bond counsel on board. We'll need to get an OS issued. I mean, there is a lot of work to do before we ever get to the point of actually selling the COP. So it's going to take some time to put it all together. If I get direction that you would like to move forward with this option, I think we need to think about getting some of those pieces and parts moving. There is always the option at the end, if you don't want to actually issue them, we can say, no, we don't want to do that. So you always have that option. But to wait until like right before you need them to try and get all this done would be really, really hard.
Well, it sounds like council's good, but we can always reevaluate and see where we're at as we get. So it's not like we're locked in right at this moment, but we're in a good spot to say, yeah, we feel comfortable.
Get her, Jill.
Mayor, one other thing that I need direction on is on the line of credit. That would be something we would open. We wouldn't use it unless we needed it for the contingency piece of this, but I would need direction from council to open that line of credit. So if I could get some direction in that regard, that'd be great.
Go. Thanks, Jill. Thank you for reminding me.
So Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't know procedure. Does this have to go to a resolution or?
Do you know that process, Carter?
So there's a couple of things that, that we could be talking about here as it relates to. As it relates to, you know, tying the loop, closing loop, excuse me, for phase two, without a doubt, you're going to get the opportunity to work bids and those kinds of things that get phase two going. As it relates to the COPs and so forth, I would feel comfortable if there were some level of formal direction at the appropriate time to make sure that COPs are the right thing to do and move forward in that regard. Not to mention the fact that there's a lot of formal steps you got to take to actually sell them and whatnot. So yes, there would be formal steps, I think, associated with the COP. As it relates to the line of credit, what would you say as far as that goes?
I would recommend, Mayor Counsel, I would recommend a resolution that authorizes the city manager or financial director to open the line of credit.
Okay, great, thank you. Great discussion. I'm sure you did.
So timing on COP, I mean, she can start working on stuff and then at?
The right time, I think.
Four, five, six months.
Yep. Probably come back with updates and things, how that's going, my understanding.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jill. Appreciate your expertise and help. Um, okay, Casper Housing Authority, potential loan, Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. The Casper Housing Authority has a request in front of the council wherein they would like to borrow from the council, from the city of Casper, a million dollars for work on the Wyoming National Bank Building that they can describe to you as to the full scope of what it is that they would like to use that money for. As you saw in your memo on the matter, the idea would be that an interest rate similar to what could be charged through other mechanisms and so on would be in the neighborhood of 4.25%. And you have that opportunity to consider whether or not this level of partnership could be reinitiated with the Housing Authority. Now, for those of you who have been around a while and have followed these kinds of things in the past, you know that we have had two similar relationships with the Housing Authority in the past, one of which was recently fulfilled in the form of a retired loan that the previous council made with the Housing Authority, albeit not as much with regard to what's being requested from you now. But nonetheless, in my estimation, a very good demonstration of how this partnership can work, in which case, in all cases, I should say, where the city has worked with the Housing Authority to promote housing and services available for our underserved. Liz is here tonight to help walk us through this conversation. We also have Kim here with the Housing Authority to ask any, to answer any other more detailed technical questions that you might have in mind. And with your blessing tonight, we can prepare the formal steps necessary to make that happen. And so if I could turn some time over to Liz, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wanted to set the stage as to where and how we got to tonight's meeting. In February of this year, we did a housing needs assessment presentation to all of you and really quantified what the need for affordable housing is, senior housing, and really the impact that Casper needs housing in order to stay economically viable. And as you all worked through your priority-based budgeting goals, economic viability was very, very important, was critical, and that's where housing came into place. Not only new housing, but also making sure that we are maintaining and preserving our housing stock with the affordable housing that we already have in line, but also, again, looking at the preservation and maintenance for just even senior housing, which was in high demand. So we quantified it at 1,800 units affordable as a need and about 750 units of senior housing, given our demographic trends that were outlined, not only through the state WCDAs Strategic Housing Plan that was completed, but also with Wyoming Housing Network studies that the Casper Housing Authority had done, the Wyoming and Casper Realtors Association, our own building division updates on what housing was doing. So that was February. Beginning of April, Kim and I went to the National Housing Conference in Dallas, Texas. All 50 states represented. Yes, we were the only two from Wyoming, but we were there with 750 housing professionals, both from a public and private sector, as well as contractors and developers and financiers. We were sitting at that Housing Authority, listening to ways that the public sector and how councils can support housing in their communities by looking at loan opportunities as well as land opportunities and how we can make these housing needs evolve. And I'm sitting there from the public side, listening to all this and thinking of the nine of you. And Kim's sitting there from the private side, as well as with Casper Housing Authority being our housing partner, and her cell phone rings. Really, it texted because we know we have to have all of our phones off at conferences. But she was notified at that point in time that the Wyoming Bank Building Apartments, and I put that in the memo, had had the low-income housing, the Lytec credits had matured. And if you think back to the Wyoming Bank Building Apartments and the city finally getting ownership of those after having an out-of-state owner on those apartments back in, and it was actually the building, back in the early 2000s, the owner was out of California. The building is falling apart. Bricks are falling down to the sidewalk there on Second Street. I remember going to Dr. Wheelo's eye doctor appointments back there in the 80s. But that building itself is falling apart. That's in the early 2000s. The city was able to get that property repurchased from that California owner, and then we were able to work with, you all did the deal, with Steve Grimshaw. And he was able to do the low-income housing tax credits, get 45 units built there in the Wyoming National Bank Building. A true testimony, we, you know, we gifted parking spaces on top of the parking garage. Again, all council working through that. So again, fast forward, 15 years has passed. Those tax credits have matured. Mr. Grimshaw is ready to sell the Wyoming National Bank Building because we've met the needs of that HUD-financed property. A little bit of panic went through Kim and I because this is suddenly now being offered for sale again in Casper, Wyoming, in downtown Casper, 45 affordable units. Who would like to buy that? And will they be an out-of-state buyer who is going to collect the rents on a well-established property and maybe never even show up in Casper, Wyoming? And so the two of us are looking around the room and looking at this and looking at the time sensitivity. I'm texting Carter from Dallas saying, we've got an issue in downtown Casper. If this property is suddenly repurchased by someone from out of state, and not to slam out-of-state owners, but we already have seen what happens when downtown property are owned from someone else, or do we try to work quickly with the Casper Housing Authority to get a bid put in on that? And that is, in fact, Kim was texting with her board of directors at that point in time, saying, this is something we need to be conscious of. This fits the strength and talent of the Casper Housing Authority to purchase it, which they can do, as they're mandated to be able to purchase and own property, but more importantly, to manage it and preserve it so that, again, we maintain local ownership of that and local management. And so with her board's approval and support from Carter, we were able to see a kind of an offer put in long distance. So as soon as we got back from Dallas, I sat down with Eric Easton and Jill Johnson, and we started to talk through what would a loan look like? What would a term be? What could we comfortably look at financing from the Opportunity Fund within the city? And would, again, the Casper Housing Authority Board be open to a 25-year loan or turning of 25-year term? We looked at the interest rates, which I identified in that memo, and looked at something that would be comparable and yet competitive enough, but not too competitive to compete with typical conventional loan financed through a local bank because we need to be able to keep the rents low and make that property still affordable and manageable. So you see in the loan proposal, a 4.5% interest rate over the 25-year term, a million dollars. The city will make a very comfortable interest earnings on that over that 25-year term, but it is still a workable enough rate for the Housing Authority to continue to put the management and improvements into that property so that we can continue to have a successful housing project in downtown Casper that meets our needs. And again, it's all with the goal of preservation and maintenance. So that's where we are today. We are to the point of wanting to see about getting some direction from the council on questions you may have. But again, we have not moved forward with this. I know Kim and her board do have a turnaround time in order to get the financing secured. As Carter alluded, they have been, they've worked with us, kept current on their current loans with us and continue to use their one cent funding to, you know, compete with, not compete, pardon me, to carry out the Center Point project that we have downtown on B Street. We've also done some work with them, obviously, with Ravencrest and then, most recently, with Liberty Square on Beverly. So their track record, not only construction of housing, but management and maintenance of affordable housing in Casper is a true testament. So I know Kim and I would be happy to answer questions that you all may have, but I did want to kind of set the stage as to how fast this came together and how the response got to where it was.
Amber, I'll get you back.
Because I think I know the answer to this question, but should this property sort of go just to the market to have people, to have people, you know, place offers to purchase? What are the obligations after the maturity has been satisfied with HUD? What other obligations remain for that property? Does it just, you know, the new buyer can do anything they want with it? The new buyer can turn it into luxury apartments? They could turn it into office space? Or does it have any remaining obligation to continue to be affordable housing?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, it does not need to stay as affordable. A new owner could do what they want to with that property. And if it were a different owner other than the Housing Authority, again, we need to relook at the agreement we have for parking on the rooftop of the parking garage that you all had offered up the 45 units. There is no fee for those residents to park there. That is just part of the parking garage contract even now that Republic otters. Back to your original question, no, there is not a requirement any longer to maintain that. It can be changed into something else.
So I didn't see, I don't know if I can be revealed at this point, but is the purchase price, you got to believe, is more than a million dollars?
Mr. Mayor, council? Yep? Price is one. For that seven. Assuming that the property is.
Grimshaw is okay with all of that.
Mr. Mayor, council, yes. And as you know, he is moving on to do new construction opposed to do on your.
Just out of curiosity, is the Housing Authority unable to get like a conventional loan? Is that why they're kind of coming to Casper is it hard to get a conventional loan or something like this?
Mr. Mayor, council, again, the rate is going to be higher than the 4.5% when you look at what we included in the council memo. And again, if that is, in fact, what they would need to do, then we would, they would need to be looking at taking the rents up on the 45 units there in order to cover the cost of that loan. And so as I stated, being able to work through a city government, if that government is solvent enough, was one of the suggestions made at this National Housing Conference, was that if municipalities are able to do reasonable loans on money for housing, that was a suggestion, as well as looking at land. Whether they're low-cost land in sales, if it is affordable, that is a possibility too. So, and again, you all have honored that. We have the testimony with Liberty Square, where you are able to sell the former Beverly Hill, Beverly Hills, Beverly Street, Beverly Street, Ballfields, there's the word I'm looking for, Ballfields, to the Casper Housing Authority for less than appraised value for them to put up that affordable and workforce unit which stands there now. So we have done that. You have done that with the landing.
Thank you.
I answered that.
You did. It was in the, it's in the memo, just seeking clarification. Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, Kyle.
Thanks, Lynn, Liz, for all that context. I was curious if we could hear from Kim, actually, on what rent at that building has looked like under Lytec? You know, I was like drawing to your knowledge about, because even being on the board for several years, the different HUD programs and the different vouchers and the credits and stuff still overwhelm me trying to make sense of them. And so I was just curious if you could fill us in on what has rent looked like there previously under that Lytec umbrella? And what does it look like going forward under CHA management? Do we need, is there any reason, is there a mic over there?
Oh, yeah. Come over here. There's a microphone.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thanks, Kim.
Generally, when you're reviewing the low-income housing tax credit property, it's about half of what regular commercial rent is. So you're really looking at what you would spend at any other apartment complex of the same age. For example, you know, in the Blackmore area, those businesses over there, the rent to live at Wyoming National is approximately half of that, which is what we consider to be workforce housing. One of the things that we'll be looking at, just by virtue of it being affordable housing and those rents even being at half, that margin to run that property is very, very slim. One of the things that we'll be looking at, we're working with the VA on veterans vouchers to go inside the building to put about 50 to 60% of the building into a vouchered position with HUD. What that does is HUD will pay a little bit more money to expand that, but the people that are receiving and are qualified for those vouchers can pay rent as low as $50, and HUD will cover the rest. And so it's a win-win for people that still could not afford to live at Wyoming National right now. They will be able to have access to that property. So as things turn over and as there's opportunity, we would go ahead and get those new vouchers in there so that there's a variety. And so as you, as you work towards self-sufficiency and you start to make more income for your family, your voucher will, you'll pay more and more of the rent, but then you could also move into a non-vouchered apartment and stay in the same neighborhood that you're in right now. All that model is in all of our properties, and it seems to work very, very well, helping people to move through that system without leaving their home. And so we've had quite a few people go from getting to that Lytec amount, which is still half, but then be able to move into purchasing a home or the private rental market and be able to sustain their, be able to stay in their homes themselves.
Yeah. I have one more, too.
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll get Amber.
Thanks. So my question is, Kim, I don't want to put you on the spot again. I'll defer to you on maybe how in-depth you want to get with this, but do you have previous, you know, one of the concerns is an out-of-state entity purchasing and potentially doing something totally different other than residential? Or maybe just managing the property as is and potentially not putting resources back into the building, letting it fall apart? What is your experience at the Housing Authority of maybe, you know, inheriting properties from an out-of-state management or ownership firm? How does this, how does the Housing Authority reinvest in the properties that it manages? And how do you be really efficient? And, you know, being on the board, I know how, you know, accountable you guys are for all the funding and the care you take to your properties. But I guess what distinction would you make between what the Casper Housing Authority does and what an outside potential owner, what that might look like?
That's a good question. That distinction is actually big. It's very, very big. very, very big. There are only two, there are only two, eight, two people in the state of Wyoming who manage their own properties. So they, there's a whole lot of people who develop them, but there are only two that manage. Casper Housing Authority was one, and Steve Grimshaw is the other. And both of us, we reinvest money as we go. So if something breaks, we fix it. What generally happens, all the other properties are managed by an out-of-state company. What generally happens is when they get to that, into that 15 years, the property has deteriorated to the point where it has to be recapitalized. So they have to go back in, get more credits, come back, take the whole thing apart and put it back together again. A couple of things happen. It's out of service for a while. People are displaced whenever they do that, and so there's a lot of concern about that out-of-state management company that comes in. And there are some good ones. I'm not saying they're all bad. I'm just saying, when you're there, you take better care of your property than anyone else will do for you. And so we're, we're, our properties, yeah, and you're welcome to come and see them, they're, they look as good today as they did the day we built them. And CenterPoint is eight years old. And so I think it's really critical. It's a, it's an important distinction, and we've, we've even reached out to other developers and said, hey, you know, you need to start managing your home. Talk to us about the benefits of doing that, because at the end of that 15 years, you're not left with something that just really has to be torn apart and put back together again. Mr. Grimshaw has taken such excellent care of that property and has been such a wonderful manager of the people in the property because it fits in downtown Casper. And we own something that's not very far away from it. So we're very familiar with the challenges of being in an urban setting and having families living there. And so our concern with that, as we, as I spoke with Liz at the conference, is how visible that property is. And what happens if there's not a manager there that cares about what's happening, right? It can affect the businesses. It can affect all of, I mean, it's right on Second Street, on Second and Center. And so it could affect a lot of, of downtown folks and a lot of downtown businesses. We just felt like our management style is very, very similar to Mr. Grimshaw's, and we have great respect for him and what he's done. The property is in excellent condition. Considering, we get calls fairly often on people who have exhausted their tax credits wanting us to take it, because what happens is the people who own the tax credits don't want to sell the building for the amount that it's worth, because then they have to pay back all those taxes, right? So they can't sell it for what it's worth. They have to sell it for whatever liabilities are left on the property. So that's how we're able to get this deal. But we get that call often, and we've looked at a lot of properties in Casper, and you just kind of walk away going, oh, my gosh, what a project that's going to be. And so we've developed for the last eight years, and we really wanted to do something in the way of preservation of affordable housing and preserving the wonderful things that have been built. And so this is the first step in that direction. And we will be looking at Mr. Grimshaw going forward. He has a lot of wonderful properties, and we're very interested in working with them again.
Thank you. Generally, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I, I, I think, you know, bare minimum that we should be doing right now is trying to preserve the affordable housing that already exists in this community. If we start to backslide there, I think we're compounding a problem that we already are aware of. And so that seems like the lowest hanging fruit is to try to keep as much of that affordable housing in that, you know, in the market that we can. I have a question that I, I'm not so familiar with this sort of model of us giving a loan. So I'm just curious, like, how do we collateralize this? Do we collateralize it? I'm familiar with a bank loan, but not, you know, municipal loan. What does that model look like?
Your honor, mayor, in the past, what we've done is taken a first-position mortgage in the property. And whatever other mortgage is going to be there, they would have to be second in position to us, but we would take a mortgage in the property. It looks like from the memo, the property may be worth about $14 million, so it shouldn't be all of that hard to get another financial institution to take a second position, but because it's taxpayer money, we take a first-position mortgage in the property.
Other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I think I'm totally in favor. My question escaped me, so listening to Amber.
Truly off your rack.
Do that more often.
Check out what you did.
Think about it, Pat. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns, clarifications? Just need a direction from us if you're supportive of that? All right. How's everybody feel about it? All right, moving along. You're on time.
Wow.
It is.
Fight my best, Esther.
We were ahead of schedule, actually. Good point. All right, PBB.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, this is the opportunity for you to get a status update, really, as it relates to the task force's work on priority-based budgeting. You recall that the next assignment that you gave them was to reconcile the feedback that we got from the community with regard to the feedback and the work that they, your task force has been doing to help rank the priorities that you have identified. And so with that, we thought we'd give Jill a moment to give you that status update, as well as any committee members around the table that want to add some insight as well.
Vice Mayor, councillors, thank you for this opportunity. The group came together, and they did a fantastic job of really looking at the feedback that we got from the community and looking at where they had prioritized the different definitions within the top tiers, I guess, of the priorities. So the group went through and they took eight of the definitions, and they actually moved it from one priority to a higher priority based on citizen feedback. So that was fantastic. In addition to that, there was one other item within the group of definitions that they actually made a change to. So within the environmental sustainability and stewardship, there was a definition that talked about green spaces and parks and the urban canopy, and, and they thought that by changing this one from a medium to a high, we could then go back and look at, under well-maintained infrastructure and city facilities, removing parks from there, because we had so well-defined that within the environmental sustainability. So that was just one little change that they had made. Again, they left it at a high priority for the, the well-maintained city buildings, and they also moved the enhancing green spaces from a medium to a high priority. So again, I think great work for that whole task force. I think you guys did a fantastic job. In addition to that, we talked about, in the council memos that you get each time, we, we talk about different things, connecting the priorities to whatever request is coming forward to the council, is something that we, we as staff need to do going forward. So I believe that Flur's team is working on, within the template, adding that as something that you will see going forward. I wanted to also give you a, just a, an idea of where we are right now on the consolidation of the programs. So as we had talked before, we had 520 programs citywide. We have been looking at, looking at the community programs and making sure that those are consolidated into something that is truly an outward-facing priority, or, I'm sorry, program. So we originally had 322 community programs, and through consolidation, we have gotten that down to about 105 community-facing programs. So that was kind of step one. So step two now is to go back to our governance programs and decide, okay, is this governance program actually connected to a community-facing program, or is it just more of a overhead type of program? So an overhead type of program would be like payroll. It is something that we do for every program. So instead of considering each little piece that would go to each of those individual programs, we have decided to make it an overhead type of program, which would not be a direct cost to the community-facing programs. So we are just finishing up with looking at our governance programs and putting them to the right categories. And then from there, we will use your, your priorities, and we will connect those through the scoring process, and we will be able to have a matrix ready for you, hopefully within the next 30 days. So pretty excited to see that work coming to an end and giving you some really great information on, on the different programs and where they fit within the matrix. And then finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we're looking at for the future. So when we originally talked about using PBB to look at the programs and see how well they're doing or not doing, and giving you some good data-driven decision-making tools, we need to give you a little bit more beyond the matrix. So when I went to a recent GFOA conference, I was on a panel that talked about priority-based budgeting, and we had many different governments that were on that panel, and they talked about how they did priority-based budgeting or program-based budgeting. It was really interesting. We all did it differently. So something that one of the other governments had done is they had connected the program through their general ledger account number, which I thought was, that's really cool. So right now, we are using an external tool, the Resource X tool, to look at programs, the budget for programs. What I'd also like to do is think about in the future, connecting our actuals to programs as well. So we don't have that capability currently. However, I would like to see that in the future, either having Resource X be integrated into our MUNIS system, or to look at using our account structure to actually have the program listed there. Then we can run a budget to actual, and you would see that by program, which we can't do right now. This is not something I can promise in the next week or month, or probably the next year, but, but this is something I'd like to look at for a long-term vision for priority-based budgeting, is really giving you that extra data point to see, are the programs really functioning like you want them to. So with that, that's all I've got. So if you had questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So Jill, I noticed, and I don't know if others in here who could answer this, or Carter perhaps, but the, it seemed like as I, as I read through the memo, the changes in priority and so forth, that many of them went, for example, from medium to high, or not very many of them went from medium to lower. So I guess my, my question was, as I read that, is, is, is that, will that create any kind of a conundrum or a challenge to staff as they go about kind of implementing those priorities and those programs?
Mayor, councillor, so actually, what that does is it changes the scoring of a program. So if a program is connected to one of your priorities, we, we give it a score to figure out where it fits in the matrix. So when it moves from a medium or a low to a medium to a high, that makes it a higher priority, so it, it scores it better within the matrix. So when we look at the fourth quartile in the matrix, where these are programs which don't impact a lot of people, they cost us a lot of money, nobody else, or other people can do them. When you look at those types of programs, you would assume that the council priority for those would be fairly low.
Quick draw. Go ahead.
More comment about that. We, when we got the community feedback, generally speaking, that's what we were contending with, was vast majority of the things that we have ranked, anything other than high priority, the community had also ranked those a high priority. And so we tried to be, we tried to use discretion and not move everything to a high priority, because it feels like it sort of defeats the purpose then of prioritizing them in the first place. But we tried to find some of the threads where we really felt there was enough, enough evidence from the questionnaire tool that we used to, to support moving them, understanding that, you know, we may still, when we see this first matrix, we may still have to do a lot of sort of parsing out of, you know, of these things that are all high priorities, which are the highest priorities. And so it was tricky. We didn't move everything that they wanted, that the community suggested should be a high priority. We did try to keep some, you know, stratification within our, within our priorities, but it was, that was the general result of that questionnaire, was that everything's a high priority. So I tried to use personally more of the, sort of the qualitative data that was provided, some of the comments, some of the, you know, written-out feedback to, to be a little bit more helpful there. And then I did also, to the, the priority that we sort of reworded, we split, really, the way I conceptualized it, was splitting out, in terms of like rec amenities, splitting out parks and green space from sort of the facilities and the rec center and Hobarton and all those things. It seemed like, one, it feels like for us, we treat those differently in terms of how we plan for them, all of the amenities that, you know, have business plans and that sort of thing, like we, and we fund those in a certain way, and then we've got parks. And it seemed like the community was conceptualizing of those two things separately as well in the commentary that we got. And so it felt like treating them as two separate entities within our priorities might help us be more responsive to, one, how we budget for them, and two, how the community sort of might say like, oh, if, if they just say, they weren't really saying generally, like, we want, you know, more support for rec amenities. They were really saying like, we want parks, green space. And so we wanted to be able to treat those separately in how we prioritize them as well. So, so we changed the wording from what we originally presented to you.
Thanks, Mayor. I think councillor Pollak kind of drilled down what my question was. Apologies for my analogy, but my seven-year-old daughter loves Pixar movies, including The Incredibles. And so on that point, you know, when everything, when everyone's special, nobody is. And so kind of along the same lines, when everything's a priority is, nothing is. So I appreciate the additional context, and it sounds like, yeah, I mean, we might have to do some parsing of, of the high priority. What's the highest priority? What's higher priority? What's, you know, so future parsing potentially on the horizon, but otherwise sounds good.
And I think we should consider, for our future conversations and for future questionnaires or, or ways of soliciting citizen input, you know, what we presented in that questionnaire were all already things that we had prioritized to some extent. And so I think people were reluctant to say, oh, this is a low priority, because it wasn't. If it was a low priority truly, it wouldn't have made the list at all. And so I feel like maybe the language could be honed so that people understand that even something that, you know, gets the lowest ranking is still enough of a priority that it ends up on the priority list and in the budget. And so I'm not sure how best to do that, but I wonder if, you know, trying to finesse the language a little bit might give us, we might get better, more usable results from something like the questionnaire or something like that, if, if the language was presented differently. Because I, I just think the, the community didn't really mark anything as a low priority. We were dealing with, 90% of it was high, 10% of it was medium, and so that was, that part, for me, didn't feel as usable. The, the comments and sort of the narrative that people provided, I thought, was usable. But just sort of the numerical ranking, I feel like we might need to reframe that next time we solicit input.
Agreed.
So I need to, just to follow up. So it's priority-based budgeting, so if the priorities shift, I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure the connection yet between the ranking of priority and how much money gets spent on various programs or based on priority ranking.
Sir.
Can you can help me connect that?
Sure.
So right now, our budget is already set. So when we look at our programs, we actually have allocated costs to each of those programs. So the budget is already set for each program. So when we look at priority-based budgeting, and we talk about each of these different programs has a different cost to them, the next phase that we are going to see is the matrix. So when we originally did the presentation on priority-based So when we originally did the presentation on priority-based budgeting, we talked about the matrix and where the programs would fit within the matrix. Some programs are going to be a very high priority, they impact all of our citizens. I mean, they may or may not cost us a lot of money, but they're in a box in the matrix that we probably wouldn't do anything with them at this point. We're going to really focus on the fourth quartile of the matrix, which is programs which really don't impact a lot of people, they cost us a lot of money, other people can do them, and there's one more that goes with it. But basically, there are things that maybe we need to look at reallocating those resources. So when we look at the budget, you know, we talked earlier about how do we fund the debt service for the CBC? Maybe we can look at some of those programs and say, gosh, maybe this is something that somebody else could do and we can take our money and repurpose it somewhere else. So really, that's going to be our next step in the priority-based budgeting process.
Makes sense. Thanks, Jill. Any other questions for Jill? Okay, so it looks like recommendation is to authorize the next two pilot programs? Is that what you guys are asking?
Let's take a shot.
Continue, sorry. Continuation, sorry, I lost my page. All right, is everybody okay with that? Thanks again, Jill. All right, agenda review. Carter, do you have anything? I know next week is your final meeting with us, so anything you have for next week you want to update us on?
Not really. The, we do have a couple items we need to go over with you in the pre-meeting, in addition to what you see on the regular agenda, all of which are consequential, of course. And I always like to bring to your attention the final back page, the final page of your documents called future agenda items to make sure we're on pace with respect to what you would like to see on the horizon for reading topics. And that's really all I have.
Does anybody have any questions about the future agenda items or anything?
I don't know if I brought it up before, but on Coates Road and weight limits, but the city or the counties, what they've, what they've put forth, will that basically cover us in the city, meaning they've put weight restrictions and some other things county-wide?
You know, that's, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that's a fair question, and I would say that I would be hesitant to say that it would cover us throughout, throughout the community. Certainly, I think, as it relates to the Coates Road area, if there's a restriction on the piece of road that leads to the city's portion of road, then our way in on that regard is moot because they won't qualify to be on the county road and they certainly won't qualify, of course, to get onto the city road. So, but to, but to say that it would cover us throughout the community, I'd be real hesitant to suggest that.
So depending, I don't want to get too detailed on within the city on weight limits because, I mean, semi-traffic is constant, so I would, you know, I don't, at some point, I think we should talk about it.
Sure.
Because, you know, it looks like it's not totally going away. And it, it sounds like on the county, that they couldn't just sort out that particular road, they had to do something county-wide to keep it legal. So I don't know if we follow, follow the same type of legal process or if it's different within the city. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Counselor Sweeney that maybe some further discussion, you know, work sessions warranted. I think that's a topic that many of you had questions about and probably deserves some attention.
Counsel, okay with putting that on a work session?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, Paul, for bringing that up. Okay, let's go ahead and go counsel around the table.
Thanks, Mayor. At a homelessness coalition task force meeting last Wednesday, fair warning for all the folks who meander around downtown, there will be more parking enforcement as we've just hired on our fifth community service officer, and that is a constant ask we get of the merchants and property owners downtown is to enforce the parking ordinance and get turnover in spots so that they can, you know, have good business. Police Department reported homelessness adjacent crimes trending upwards relative to last quarter. It's not super unusual yet because it's mostly seasonal. We always do see that spike during the warmer summer months, but are watching those numbers to make sure they don't increase at a disproportionate rate. Kelly at Community Action Partnership reported that they are starting a pilot program called Safe Suds to give weekly scheduled voucher-based hygiene services for people that otherwise don't have access to shower facilities. They will be providing clean clothes, case management, and other services at a local church, is where it's going to be. Exploring, they're exploring the possibility of a mobile unit also at some point to do those services. All stakeholders in that group are reporting a greater need for services related to food insufficiency. They all reported just seeing a lot more people being food insecure and looking for those services and even people, you know, demographics of people that historically had not needed to take advantage of those services. So they're definitely seeing some, you know, changes in terms of the demographics and the need regarding food insufficiency. There, the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission reported more precariously housed people seeking meals at the rescue mission. So again, it's people that aren't necessarily homeless, but they are precariously housed, they're kind of, you know, maybe living with someone else or bunking up together or something like that. But those people that, again, historically were not seeking meals at the rescue mission are now seeking meals at the rescue mission. So potentially an indicator of, you know, things to come. And on the topic of the rescue mission, still, they're expecting an increase of $24,000 to their annual budget to keep up with the increased, you know, demand they're seeing for their meal services. At an old Yellowstone District Committee meeting yesterday, we introduced Lori Klett, our new administrative specialist, to the group. That was her first meeting. She's replacing Barb Zantmeyer, I think was. I don't know what Liz went. I think that was Barb's last name. So yeah, Lori replaced Barb a couple months ago. Looking, having a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Midwest at our August 25 meeting, once the final sign is erected, welcoming people to that area, kind of like the one we have over on Yellowstone. Discuss some upcoming conversations for amending the form-based code, such as the addition of the number of colors that you can have on your sign, the distinction between building height versus the number of floors. Liz had remarked that, you know, at the time that the code was put together, different maybe industry practices about how high your floors are and, you know, just how those things change over time. And so really trying to cap the building height versus the number of floors, giving developers more potential flexibility in that regard. So Craig and Liz will bring a draft to the old Yellowstone District Committee, and then it will go to us at a work session. And then obviously, there would be three public readings for any change to that form-based code, so expect that in the near future. I'm hopeful that we get some community input, especially in regards to some of the more recent developments in the OYD, and just make sure the community as a whole feels really good about what we would like to see the OYD look like going into the future and what sort of developments, you know, we'd like to start trying to encourage and incentivize. The group also discussed how summer events have been going and how to avoid conflicts and stepping on each other's toes. We discussed how the summer parade went logistically and things that could be improved in the future, how to maximize the impact of art walks, and just how to get more residents downtown during business hours. The David Street Station is doing really good on their capital campaign for an ice chiller. They are in their final stretch, so if you are able and willing, please contribute to that if we all want to keep the kind of hallmark vibes that we've gotten used to during Christmas time down there. I know I certainly love it. And the Casper Historic Preservation Commission gave us a sneak peek what their new Christmas ornament's going to be. Not at liberty to disclose that, but it's going to be a cool one. Yep, I like, yeah, shiv it in your face. I know what you don't. They'll announce it soon, though. Took a tour of the Casper, Attana County Health Department building this afternoon. They're making lots of great progress. I was glad to hear that 90% of the work had been done by subcontractors local to the Casper area. And I think, I don't think, Tom, you mentioned at our meeting tonight, but you said that that would look to be the case for the Business Center Police Department project as well, which I hope people are receptive to because we're always, you know, you know, it's always great to use local when we can. It can't always be the case, but 90% of the work being done at both those large projects by local providers is certainly a win, in my opinion. They are expected to be finished with construction by January and get folks moved in by March of next year. They've not dipped into their contingency funds and it looks like they're expecting to come in under budget, so congratulations in that regard. They mentioned that they did that by paring back on landscaping, going with a different siding material. They were originally going to do like a very nice sounding copper kind of siding, but they pulled back and did a different kind of metal and it sounds like saved them like $400,000, I think is what they said. So yeah, it was interesting to get a sneak peek of that building and it's certainly much better than the one, you know, I previously worked for the health department and it was a, it is a very crummy building that they work in. And I think I remarked at the time, their fire alarm system was they kept air horns strategically placed around and if you saw a fire, you found the nearest airborne and blew it. That was their, you know, so yeah, it'll be a much better facility for those folks to be working in. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the local first responders and firefighters. They've had several wildfire and structure fires to deal with this past week and appear to have been very successful knocking those down in a timely manner. I believe we still have the muddy, you know, muddy mountain fire going on as of this morning. It was five miles southeast, it was 25% contained and like just over 60 acres, I think. So hopefully, they are able to knock that one down here in pretty quick fashion as well. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Was 25%?
25% this morning. They might have made more progress throughout the day.
So I passed out the scorecard. I felt so bad after last week's meeting. Kyle always does a great job. I didn't do a very good job. But the scorecard from Visit Casper, got questions about that. So Wednesday, I did a tour of the event center. And I, I probably came across pretty rough at times. I mean, they're obviously asking for the moon and, and the building does need certain things, but a lot of things. But anyway, I, it was very good. Saw some areas that I honestly hadn't seen before. And then before I headed out on Thursday of last week, before I headed out to Bill Alamiens Town Hall on Radiant, I stopped at the North Flat Utilities deal up at the event center. Unfortunately, the attendance wasn't that great, but I thought, I thought it was very informative and Alex has since sent an email out that at least I got as being there on who to contact, different engineering and contractors. The event center was there and had a lot of questions, good questions on timing, on different, when's this going to be shut down and will you work with us? And obviously, Alex said, yeah. So and then Saturday morning, I did attend the Fort Casper, basically commemoration of the two battles. And that, that was a nice, nice thing. And then today, I attended earlier at 11:00, the health department, and I was blown away. I mean, a lot of things that I thought had gotten cut out of it that I thought were very important in case we have another COVID in the drive-through, both outside and the inside, you know, for flu shots and different immunizations, I think will be a real plus for the community and really thought that got a great bang for the buck. Very well done. So I also brought, if anybody missed Celtic Irish Festival, I did bring a couple of programs, you know, if anybody's interested and didn't make it now.
I think it's pronounced Celtic.
With a K, like a K.
Hard to say.
Once you talk about the sports, right?
That's right. I'll stick to Irish festival.
I like it. It was Carter that said he should call Pat out. So I was just listening to Carter.
I, I.
There's a reason.
You couldn't resist.
Thanks, Paul. Anything else?
Just one thing I did attend, it's through the Health Trust, but a collaboration meeting in. But again, it's, I brought it up last week. Well, they, they brought up that it would really be nice on this deal for the police department and fire department to be involved with the lacrosse out violence and suicide deal. But in, oh, one last thing. I really appreciated getting invited to our police chief's ceremony. I thought, you know, when I first heard it was going to be at the Casper College at Wheeler Hall, I'm like, are these people nuts or... But it was great and appreciated meeting the chief's family and it was really, really well-done. You stuck to the script, Mayor. Thank you very much. You, so, but didn't embarrass the rest of us.
I was nervous. I kept looking at you guys down there.
Did you see us flipping you off?
Yes. Dirty looks, shaking their heads.
But no, thanks, Chief, for job well-done and, oh, it was a great ceremony.
Randy?
Well, I didn't do anything that either wasn't on our work session or somebody else already did, so I'm just saving your time. You guys came to this Tuesday for half of my stuff. We're good.
Sorry. Jenna, do you have anything you want to report on?
Hey, no, I just did the tours too of the health department and then also the Ford Wyoming Center. So all, everything I did was pretty much covered by somebody else, so I'm good to go.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, not much to add. A lot of mine was covered as well, but to what Counselor Sweeney was mentioning about the council or the Council for Safety and Justice, the lacrosse out violence event that Pat mentioned, they do need volunteers. So if anybody's interested, it's the 7th and 8th, 9th of August, it's a Friday, Saturday. So if you, you could volunteer just in the morning or just afternoon, whatever you like, but they could use some volunteers. I think it's going to be held at the Crosswoods Park.
No.
Or Castle Soccer Field.
Soccer Fields.
Three-hour shift volunteer opportunities.
Yeah, so if you, there's a QR code, you could snap that QR code and that will take you right to the volunteer site if you'd like. Be good for us, some of us to be visible down there and be seen there. Be good for us, some of us to be visible down there and be seen there. I, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for the chief as well. Just wanted to add my congratulations and it's great to hear, I mean, numerous people there, I got to meet the chief, some of the chief's family and the people in attendance and the people I talked to, just, it was just a great tribute to a great chief. So thank you, Chief, for you doing your track record, your service in the city. Tour of the health building in today, not much to add there. It was a good tour. It's impressive to see that, for me, it was impressive to see that they're thinking about the future. You know, there's, there's space to adapt and change and grow if they need to. So that was, that was a good thing. I think a lot of thought went into that and Counselor Sweeney mentioned the accommodations for, you know, in the case of another pandemic event or a large need for vaccinations and so forth. And then the last thing I would throw in is, I think, getting a lot of interesting, I'm sure all of you have interesting feedback about the bridge conversation, so interesting both for pro and con, so.
I have a letter to the editor being published on Oil City News this week. I would recommend people keep an eye out for it.
Yeah. I thought it was coming. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. So I have.
I had priority-based budgeting, which you got to hear all about tonight. I had the police building meeting you guys hear all about tonight. Same sentiments at the health department tour that I went on and then for Wyoming Center tour. It was really helpful, I thought, to get up there and see some of the challenges, particularly the back-of-house challenges, like the stuff that we don't really see. You know, hopefully, a lot of those things don't really, you know, aren't, aren't things that you experience when you're a guest up there necessarily, but definitely creating a lot of sort of behind-the-scenes challenges and inefficiencies. I would say that it was nice to be able to see some of those things from the, from the back-of-house side of things helps to put into perspective as we continue to talk about that, that facility and the future of it. So I'd like to thank the team up there for taking the time to take us through all of that and, and for their enthusiasm for the opportunities that are there and the, the potential of that facility and, and their, you know, concern for the stewardship of it. I think, you know, we talked a lot about, that building has served us for 40 years and, you know, it's our job to make sure, if that's the direction this community wants to go, that it continues to, to last for, for the next 40 years. So it was, I could tell that that, they, they take that responsibility very seriously up there. And so it was really a valuable time spent. So if you haven't had the opportunity, definitely check it out. Great. Look forward to it. You'll enjoy it. And that's, that's all I have this week.
Thanks, Mayor.
Nothing that hasn't been covered.
The only thing I had, we had lunch today with the Department of Energy, Office of Nuclear Energy, had a good conversation about just having open dialogue about nuclear, how it's going to affect Wyoming, what's coming. Mayors from Douglas, Barnum, Evansville, Gillette, Casper were there. Vice Mayor was there, Lamb was there. So it was a good opportunity just to sit down and make a connection with the Department of Energy as we continue to go down this road of, of the future of nuclear that will undoubtedly affect our community and our state. Was, like everybody else said, I'll be real brief, but was able and honored to swear in the chief last week. It was a great swearing in. He even gave a speech for, how long was it? Did you do it, Chief? It was less than six. He kept saying that, he's, I'm going to do this in less than six.
Six seconds or six minutes?
Six minutes.
Okay.
But it was, it was actually a very, it was a great speech and we're very honored and very happy to have you as our chief. And that goes to a lot of credit for what Carter, being able to see that as a city manager, you know, what did you put into see that in the chief? So we appreciate that. Thank you. So that's all I've got. And then we do have a personnel executive session tonight. See if I can get through this without messing up. I now call the July 29, 2025 special meeting to order. The Chair entertain a motion to, by imminent action, excuse the absence of Counselor Larson. By Pollock, seconded by Bond. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding personnel. Therefore, the Chair entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session at the conclusion of the executive session to reconvene this special meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of the special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Haskins. There are a majority of members present and a motion to adjourn to the executive session has been moved and seconded. The motion requires a two-thirds majority of the council present. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned to an executive session. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.